This is the City of Wapaka, first Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
All right, welcome everybody to our Tuesday night city council meetings. We actually have a public hearing to begin the evening with, and this is to discuss ordinance number 032020. This is an ordinance under the City of Wapaka, Chapter 12, License and Permits Creating Chapter 12.27 Providing for the Regulation of Mobile Food Establishments. And it does say that we are having the public hearing today at 6:00 at 111 South Main Street. Anybody that would like to speak for or against should plan to attend. So we'll start the public hearing. I guess we probably should take roll call here. Sandy.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Okay, so at this time then, we would, if you're in favor of the ordinance as it is now written, we'll give you the opportunity to give testimony in favor of the ordinance as printed in our packet. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor? Any testimony in favor? Okay, hearing done. I know that we do have someone in the library meeting room that would like to speak to us about this, and I guess I would say that he has got some opposing opinion, so I guess this would be under the testimony of opposition to the subject. So Eric, this is for you now. If you want to just get up there and make sure that the microphone is not muted, and just give your name and address, and maybe even who you're representing, Eric, that would be helpful too.
Am I there?
You are.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Eric Vestergaard. I'm the owner of Sulton Belly on 220 South Main Street, which is between the Rosa Theater and Simpson's Restaurant. I'd like to thank you mayor and the rest of the council members for me allowing to express some concerns about this issue. I first off would like to say that I first would like to say that sorry, it's echoing a little bit. That I would like some
Eric, hold on just a second, Eric. I think Harry Schultz, I think you just joined. If you could mute yourself, that would be great.
Okay, try it again, Eric.
How's that?
Good. Speak a little louder if you can.
Good?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Like I said, I'm the owner of Sulton Belly.
We're not, hold on Eric. Eric, hold on, sorry. All right. You want to just, did you get them?
No, it's fine, I did it.
You sure? No, get them, wait. Yeah. Take your time. We get paid by a salary now at the hour.
Thank you. My name is Eric Vestergaard. I'm the owner of Sulton Belly Restaurant, 220 South Main Street, here in Wapaka between Simpson's Restaurant and the Rosa Movie Theater. I'd like to thank the mayor and all the council members for making this possible. I appreciate it very much. I do voice some concerns with some of the ordinances going on with the food trucks. First and foremost, excuse me, I'm all for bringing new businesses in, especially food trucks. Myself, I have personally thought about having a food truck before I bought the restaurant. I still am looking down the avenue of having a food truck or trailer to support my business. Some issues that are underlying for me, I had an incidence last week that there was a truck parked across the street in the parking lot during my prime time hours of lunch with direct competition. I like to see some of the licensing that goes into that other restaurants and businesses have to do, following the Wisconsin Food Code, all the fire and safety that goes into it, hood cleaning and all the other fees, other licensing, parking. I would like to see some of the trucks possibly put into more public parking areas. I see example, Riverview Park, maybe Lower South Park, maybe a public city lot, I'm not sure the circumstances on that. I do find it an issue possibly that any private owner or landowner that could just pop up any shop in their parking lot at any time. And I also like the council to think about this, not just from a food truck standpoint. Take it if you were selling hardware or clothing and someone just popped up a trailer across the street at any time, it didn't have to go through all the other stuff that other owners have to do. Like I said, direct competition, also parking permit fees, and I also saw a big issue when I did witness this myself, that I witnessed not only my customers and other customers, but through that whole block, people were parking in front of clothing stores, real estate places, other restaurants, and going to this other food truck, taking up parking for all the other downtown businesses. I'd just like to keep note of that and express my concerns with that. Like I say, I don't want to push anyone out. I support it totally, but I think there's a right way to go about it. This certain food truck also was from the Stevens Point, Portage County area, so I'm all about supporting our downtown and our locals, but that doesn't seem very local to me when someone from a different city or county comes in and does that without the proper steps to go through that process. That's about all I have. Thank you much, very much, everyone, for hearing that.
Awesome. Thank you, Eric. I know this is unusual, but instead of having him go in the other room and come back, does anybody have any questions of him at this time? Any council members or staff for that matter? I just have one, Eric, you know, I mean, I so we've been talking about the distance between restaurants and how close we would be. Is that what you're talking about here? You didn't specifically say that, but you did say they were right across the street.
Correct.
So do you think that it would help for the distance to be further away, or because I have to tell you, I think that we've done, Andrew is probably the best one to give us the answer on that, but I think we've done a pretty good job of making sure that they're being licensed properly and the county is involved, the Health and Human Services Department. So the big discussion really was with the distance between current restaurants and where the food trucks could sit.
Correct. I would probably say that was one of my main concerns, and also the, like I said, that any, anyone could almost pop up shop essentially, whether it not be me, you know, if you were at a church by Dairy Queen, or if you were selling hardware across from Novke's, i.e. example, that direct competition, where are there more sites or appropriate places that don't take away from people that are already downtown? So yes, it would be a distance thing. I don't know where that leads myself.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. As I told you when we were talking in the other room before, this is one of the first items on our agenda under the regular council meeting, so you're more than welcome to go back into that library meeting room and just listen as we go through that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. Do we have anybody else that's in opposition to this food truck ordinance? Anybody else that's in opposition? All right, I'll declare this hearing closed at 6:12 PM. All right, let's go with the city council meeting then. Welcome everybody to the regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 7, 2020, and I call this meeting to order, and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let's have Sandy read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also roll call.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Okay, next up then, we have the consent agenda. What you have in your packet is what we're looking at for the consent agenda. So unless somebody would like to see an item moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, or we would vote on that with one motion, just that single item, we would be looking for a motion to approve if nobody would like to see any changes there.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Olson, to approve the consent agenda as printed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Sorry, I should go a little slower here. Motion carries. Next up, we have the regular agenda, and again, Sandy tells me that we have no additional items to put on the regular agenda tonight, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
A move.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Fair, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, next up.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
You didn't put it on yours?
It's on page 64.
Okay. So page 64 of your packet. We received this from a candidate, a Republican candidate for the State Senate of the 14th District. It's Ken Van Dyke. We are not going to read it, it was in your packet. It's a press release really from him, and he's, sorry that he is unable to attend, but with the COVID-19, he feels better that he just does this in writing. So we received this email last week or the week before. I think you've seen this actually a couple months ago too, quite honestly, so we're seeing it for a second time, but it's just for informational purposes only. All right, next up, let's start in this room here. This is for public input. Is there anybody in council chambers that would like to give public input? This is on a non-agenda item, and your discussion should be limited to three minutes or less. Make sure you give your name and address. Anybody in here that would like to give public input? All right, let's try the library meeting room again by just if there's, I think there's some individuals in there, aren't there, Brian?
Yeah, there is. We turned the volume down on the TV.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that will solve that.
All right, so Aaron, you're going to put that up on the screen? Okay, so if we have somebody in the library meeting room that would like to speak to us on a public input item, please step up to the computer there and make sure it's unmuted, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time at the microphone to three minutes or less.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, I've got three hours? All right, so my name is Chuck Reynolds.
Now I'm going to time you.
I'm at 1161 Whispering Pine Road in Wapaka, or whatever the township is, Farmington, I guess. And I'm here to talk about the mask, the idea of a mask ordinance, and I guess I'd begin by saying that I think the idea of a mask ordinance is a really good idea. I've just been in Denver, Colorado last week. They have masks are required. It's just not a big deal. I mean, you go into any department store, any restaurant, even walking on the street when people pass each other, they'll just pull a mask up. It's a non-issue, and it was made a non-issue because there was a strong stand, or they got on it early, and it just didn't become an issue. Having said that, I think maybe it's, if that's too much to ask, I do have an idea to just consider, and it's a three-part idea. I'd be happy to share this if the council would like to have it. I'll just share it in a quick email. But the idea would be, part one would be to essentially create a marketing campaign, something like Wapaka Strong, and it would be a general campaign with themes about keeping each other safe. The focus would be particularly on protecting those who are most vulnerable and creating and providing education to them, but also to people who can come in contact with them, either as caregivers professionally or within their family. Campaign could even recognize that Wapaka is a destination for people to vacation and recognize that we want to keep each other safe, and among those decisions that they make in coming to Wapaka, we'd like them to help, you know, help us keep them safe and for them to keep us safe. The campaign would also introduce the idea of a COVID-safe zone, and this is probably the crux of it. The idea of a COVID-safe zone would be providing gathering spots in the public businesses and even parts of businesses to designate themselves or be designated as COVID-safe zone. A COVID-safe zone would mean that the visitors and the customers could expect that the staff would be masked, that the customers would be masked, that's possible, you can't mask when you're eating, of course. Disinfection standards would be high, and hand sanitizer would be available, and place would be well-ventilated. So a place would basically say, we have a COVID-safe zone. Now, a retail store could designate their entire store as a COVID-safe zone. A restaurant, like Simpson's, might establish a portion of their restaurant to be COVID-safe where other portions are not. Retailer, I think, you know, we're all familiar with retails around here, probably the Shop &amp; Save is pretty good already. Fleet Farm is not, you know, so Fleet Farm would probably not be a COVID-safe zone, maybe Shop &amp; Save would be. But that would provide just an opportunity for people who are concerned for their own health or for the health of their loved ones that they may be caring for, an opportunity to go out and participate in the economy, whereas right now, much of our economy is shut up from those of us who are wanting to be safe because you're not safe going in. There are very few places to eat around here where you feel like you can be safe. And I think that's because, as typical, the people who are loudest voices in this are the ones who don't want to wear a mask. So this idea of having sort of a campaign, but then backing it up with COVID-safe zones, giving retailers the choice as to whether they want to designate all or portion of their business, and then backing that up as a city with enforcement. Now, the final piece would be enforcement, and I think one of the things that we're really concerned about
Chuck, can you wrap this up? You're well over the three minutes already here, so wrap it up fairly quickly.
So the last piece of it is, there's probably a law already on the books against harassment, and I think we just need somehow within all of this weave in that anybody who harasses somebody else for wearing a mask or not wearing a mask would be subject to, you know, the laws that are already on the books. It just doesn't make any sense that somebody can go into a store and harass the owners and the clerks because they have a mask policy, and that just needs to be enforced, and, you know, so that we can have a sane society where people can get along around here. All right, so that's it. I'd be happy to submit this via email to whoever.
Thank you. You can send it to Aaron Jensen's email. You can find that on our webpage.
All right.
Thank you, Chuck, for coming tonight. Food for thought, appreciate it. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item?
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Hi, my name is Sophia Bukiewicz. I live at 124 East Lake Street in Wapaka, and I hope to find all of you council members and your families well amidst all of the pandemic. I've come before you tonight as a member and representative of the 19 to 24-year-old age group demographic, one of the leading age groups for positive COVID cases. In efforts to make sense of this, I think it is extremely important for all of us to consider the common sense of selfishness and immortality that's often expressed with my age group in times both of peace and crisis. I feel it is also extremely important for me to share with you the sense of fear that the pandemic provokes for me. Although I myself do not fall into one of the high-risk categories, many of my mentors, neighbors, and family members do. I fear for their safety, and it is for that reason I take social distancing and mask-wearing protocols extremely seriously. Not all young people, while people in general, express the same forethought and fear. While I applaud your efforts of education, too many people in my age group are not heeding the message. Stronger measures are needed for progress and healing to begin in our community. Here in Wapaka, we pride ourselves on the strength of our community, our ability to rally and support one another. In times like this, our community should be stronger, not only in support, but in demanding better from one another. I fully sympathize with the difficulty of your positions of leadership and the struggles in moving forward trying to implement citywide COVID-safety protocols. I beg of you to not let the obstacles or opposition lead you away from the path that best protects our beloved community. Even if leadership above you, state and federal, do not model these practices, do and demand better of Wapaka. Please enact a citywide mandate of mask-wearing and social distancing in public places and places of business, for all of our sakes. I have many ideas on how to go about this to ensure that all people are justly and equally protected. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you would be interested in assistance moving forward with these mandates. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Thanks for attending. We have another individual that would like to give public input?
Hi. This is going to be an anticlimax after my daughter's presentation. I'm Kari Esbensen from 124 East Lake Street, Wapaka, and I would like to just applaud the members of the city staff for their educational outreach to the community. I had the privilege of seeing the video that was released just prior to the 4th of July holiday, asking members of the community to practice COVID-safe prevention methods, and thought that was excellent. And, but I want to talk about the issue of time, time being of the essence. We have a looming crisis right now, and while education can play an important role, we need people to act. And as you know, many of you know, my husband is a daycare physician. My daughter's a trained, the one that just spoke, is a CNA who's starting to, will be starting to work at Bethany Nursing Home. I have a second at Bethany Nursing Home, and another one working in our retirement community in Appleton as part of our nursing training program. As a medical family, we're extremely concerned about the fact that Wapaka County is now considered by the State Department of Health to be a high-activity site for COVID infection. And as most of you probably are aware, traveling to various different venues in the community, not everybody is taking the educational messaging seriously and continues to be noncompliant with recommended mask-wearing, social distancing protocol. My husband, who is on call tonight and wasn't able to be here tonight, is especially concerned about the oncoming influenza season when you can have occurrence of influenza along with COVID, and how that impacts the medical system. And as you know, just recently, within, I believe, the last three weeks, we experienced substantial increase in deaths in our county concentrated in, within the city of Wapaka. As of today, I understand we're at 10 total fatalities for the county, and I know at least five or six of those took place in the city of Wapaka itself. So we're concerned that education alone will not meet the needs of the coming storm, and in order to deal with this issue of noncompliance, we are coming before you and will be approaching Wapaka County itself with a request for a mask requirement for people utilizing businesses and public spheres, both within the city and around the county. We feel that this is essential because we know that there are many asymptomatic individuals out there who are still not practicing proper protocol, but yet can infect other people, and given our high senior citizen and at-risk population, this is something of considerable concern. Since February, when we started monitoring the whole COVID situation, my husband and his colleagues have been working very hard to try and keep it out of the state veterans' home, and out of other nursing home facilities, but also just from infecting the general population here. And every night, well, up until three weeks ago, we didn't share the same data together.
Kari, can you wrap this up? You're well over your three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Anyway, you know where I'm going with this. We would like to see a mask requirement ordinance passed by the city, but we will also be approaching Wapaka County to ask for one as well. And we do this out of love for our community and for our neighbors, and not wanting to see the healthcare system overwhelmed. And one other quick, Dane County did just pass a mask requirement ordinance that I was notified of as of today, and I believe Milwaukee and Green Bear are working on them as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else that would like to give us public input? Brian, was that it in there?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
I'll go back and double check.
Oh, I think we got another one here.
No, that's the same one.
Oh, okay.
That was Sophie.
All right, so you heard the public input. Let's go on to unfinished business.
Mayor, actually, I just want
Oh, I'm sorry, we had some
It's all right.
Yeah.
So I received a couple of written statements to our public input email. The first one is from Catherine Nelson and Wayne Thompson. They reside at N2313 Smith Road in Dayton. We are writing to express our support for a mask ordinance. We like to shop at local businesses whenever possible. Since this has begun, we have been shocked at how few people are wearing masks even as our numbers continue to climb. Increasingly, we order things online or drive to Menards. Sadly, we aren't the only members of our community that do this. It's a shame. How do we feel, or how do we place a value on our healthcare system or local businesses? How do we place a value on someone's life? Surely, we can suffer through the minor inconvenience of wearing a mask for the sake of our community. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns. Then I received, we received one other public input statement, and this is from Pat Huber at 614 Elm Street. at 614 Elm Street, and that's in the city. Hello, city officials. It had come to my attention that a prominent daycare physician is pushing for mandatory masking of the city of Wapaka. I want to implore you to please do not pass this request. There are many conflicting studies about masking, and there are many that dispute masking effectiveness. Masks, however, are very detrimental to those who already suffer from breathing difficulties. My son-in-law had to leave his job after becoming ill while wearing a mask for a partial shift. His breathing does not allow him to wear a mask. This should remain a matter of liberty here in Wapaka. Since empirical scientific data does not exist to prove the effectiveness of masks for the virus, I implore you not to make masking mandatory in the city of Wapaka. Many of us are of the belief that this virus, like the influenza virus, must run its course, infect those in the community causing mild illness in most, to cause the herd immunity that is sought. Please do not take away our right to choose whether or not we wear a mask. I have already been required to wear one at work. Please do not make it mandatory for me to wear one in the community, especially not outside while breathing fresh air, as that is the best thing for us. Thank you for listening, and please heed to this request. That's all I have.
Okay. And I am just going to mention, just mention one other. We actually received a letter that, with no name on it, that talked about this same thing, and they didn't put their name on it, and so we're following our normal policy. If they don't put their name on correspondence with us, we are not going to read it in front of city council or in the public. So, I implore anybody that takes the effort to write something and deliver it to City Hall, at least put your name on it, or someone's name on it, so that your message can be read and heard. Thank you, Aaron.
Yes.
Okay, going back to the food truck then. Ordinance, this is for unfinished business. This is ordinance number 032020, and this is an ordinance under City of Wapaka Chapter 12 License and Permits, creating Chapter 12.27, providing for the regulation of mobile food equipment, and it's the first reading. Andrew, do you, I know you have on page, somewhere around page 69, 68, that ordinance, you want to just update us a little bit on what you have?
Sure, I think it's 67, if you're looking for it. Is that right?
Yep, that is correct, Andrew.
Okay, so a few minor changes, and again, we put those in red for you. We did meet as a group to make sure we understood what was requested by council at the last meeting, and make sure we update the things that needed to be updated. As you can see, all the distances were changed to 150 feet, as requested at the last meeting. There are a few changes on, what section is that? Section 5B, number nine. There you go, Aaron. So starting with number nine, again, it's 150 feet. We wanted to clarify a little bit of how that would be measured, so that there wasn't any gray area. Was it measured from a door? Was it measured from the furthest sign? Was it measured from the top of the building? You know, just trying to clarify that. And then we clarified a little bit with the private property and the permission, based on some conversations within our group, to try to make sure that everything's clarified moving forward. So, those are the only changes that were made, based on the conversation at the last meeting.
Anybody have any comments or specific questions?
Mayor?
Yes, Paul.
I still think 150 feet is too short. We're looking at food trucks, they have a right to do business, but as our guest here said, from Sultan Valley, last week, we had somebody from Stevens Point pop in. We're allowing these food trucks to operate too close to existing businesses, who are permanent members of our community, employer or citizens, pay property taxes, give donations to organizations, et cetera. They're members of the community, and I think 50 yards or 150 feet is too short. It just, and I saw this food truck, it was in the old Chamber parking lot, and it was just right in the front yard of three or four existing restaurants, and that's not fair.
So, any other comments? Go ahead, Lori.
The question I have is, Eric referred to people being parked on Main Street, but you know, isn't that public parking? For the whole, isn't Main Street parking in the stalls? Isn't that for everybody? It could be, so we can't kind of say, well, you can't park if you're going to the food truck, right?
I don't know if you're being rhetorical, or if you're actually asking somebody a question.
Yeah, I'm asking somebody, I mean, I thought Main Street parking was Main Street parking. You know, you have your two-hour limit. Is that correct, Brian? It's two-hour limit and-
Not on the weekends.
Not anymore?
Not on the weekends.
Not on the weekends, okay. But it seemed like, I didn't understand that, and I wondered if there was some parking thing, or-
Are you, are you asking if they can just park there, or does it, is it-
Run across the street? I mean, parking is parking, correct?
Well, I think the difference would be, you could park a food truck in any public parking spot, but it's the operation of a business.
No, it's not the food truck, it was the people that were coming and parking.
So, I think-
Customers.
Yeah, so-
The customers were parking on Main Street, and Eric said it wasn't exactly fair because it was parking in front of the clothing stores and-
Well, I think, let's make this real simple.
Okay.
Your question is, isn't Main Street for public parking?
Correct.
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay.
And people can park in front of Simpsons and go anywhere else on Main Street that they would like to do that.
That's what I want.
And especially on the weekends, they could do it because we do not have any time limit whatsoever. Now, Aaron, I kind of interrupted you, Lori.
That's pretty much what I was going to say.
Okay. Anything else, Lori, that you wanted to-
No, thanks, but that just made that clear. It is public parking.
All right. Anybody else that would like to make a comment? I do want to go back to Paul Mayo in a second here, but anybody else that would like to make a comment, or a question of what Andrew has presented tonight?
Mayor?
Yes, or Dave?
I think that 50 yards would cover that one situation, only one situation, at Sultan Valley, that at least go to a waypoint, I would think.
I can't hear you.
To be more than 50 yards away.
So it does not? And I'm always saying that because I actually measured it on GIS. It covers about half of that parking lot, but not the full. So you could, you could, in that situation, move it to a certain part of the parking lot, still, still meet the 150-foot. Yep, and I wouldn't have known that other than I checked, so, good question.
Okay, so, Paul Mayo, you have indicated that you're, you think the 150 feet is, is too short, or the 50 yards is too short. I think for you to change that, you would have to make a motion and get a second, and then we would vote on that, to change that.
Okay. I would move that we change the distance to 100 yards, as we originally agreed on several readings ago.
Good. So, the motion is, is to change wherever it says 150 feet, or 50 yards, to 300 feet, or 100 yards. That's the motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, so that motion fails? Okay, here's my next, this is the first reading. Again, I'm hoping that I'm not stepping on anybody's toes. I think I've given everybody a chance to talk, if they want to, but I just want to go through this procedure as we normally do it. This is the first reading of this ordinance, although we've had like three first readings of this ordinance, so, and here's the issue. Now, you have the right, and we can ask Tom Hart to explain it better, but let me just try and explain it real quick. You have the right to waive the first reading and actually vote on the second reading tonight. So you would have to make a motion to waive the first reading, okay, which means that it's gone. And then you would just go to the second reading, and you could vote on it tonight. If you let it go through its process, we would vote on it on our next meeting, which would be July 21st, or if we call a meeting sooner, it could be on that agenda too, but it's planned for July 21st. The only reason, a couple of reasons I bring it up. One, is that we've been discussing this for quite a while, and we've had a couple of first readings, so to speak, although it's changed. Two, and I think this is the most important part, we have nothing right now. So, right now, a food truck could be parking five feet away from a restaurant, or a school, or a park, right now. And this is food truck time of the year. So it almost seems to me like we would want to have something on the books, whether you agree with the distance or not, because there's more important things, well, there's just as important things in this, I don't want to say more important, just as important things in this ordinance that make sure that they get all the proper permits and stuff, and right now, they don't have to get those. So, and let me, one other comment, and I know, Aaron, you're itching to talk to here, but one other thing I want to make sure is too, you know, ordinance, ordinances are not sketched in granite. You know, I mean, so if we find that the 150 feet is too much or too little, you know, we can, we can look at it after this summer and see how it's affected businesses, and how many people, more people we find that are in disagreement of this. But I think it gives us a starting point, you know, again, I've given my opinion in the past, but I, I just think it gives you a starting point, and we need to get something on the books.
Yep, the only thing I was going to say in relation to that was, we actually, just to put it in perspective, we actually had a gentleman come to the counter this afternoon, wondering how to operate a food truck in the city of Wapaka. So I think to Mayor's point, something on the books and something to give them is probably better than nothing. And not to, not to try to push the process past the second reading, but it's a unique scenario where we've got it in time, so.
Mary, did you want to say something?
Yes, I do. I would like to say that we, we don't want to put an ordinance out there just fully knowing that we can change it whenever we want to. So I don't think that's the spirit in which I'm going to move, that we waive the first reading, have the second reading tonight, and do a vote.
So-
Because I think it's a good ordinance.
Again, I don't know why or how I get misinterpreted here, but that's not what I said.
No, I know, and I think the public just needs to understand that we're not, that isn't, the spirit of what we're doing is because we need an ordinance, and it's a good ordinance. It's not because we can change it down the road. We always want to keep an open mind, that if something needs to be changed, we'll change it. But we need to have data in order to do that. So I was not criticizing how you expressed that at all.
So, do you want to make a mo-
I did.
Alan, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I second the motion.
Well, I don't know that that was a formal motion. Can you say, because she had like multiple comments in one motion, so can you give me your motion?
Okay, I said that I would like to move that we waive the first reading.
Okay.
Have the second reading tonight and vote.
Stop right there. Okay, we have to vote on waiving the first reading.
Okay.
First, before we can do anything else.
Okay.
Okay, Alan, you want a second? Okay, so we have a motion by Fair, second by Keeland, that we waive the first reading of ordinance number 032020. Any discussion? Sandy will take the roll.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
You said aye, yep.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Abstained.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Derek Olson?
Aye.
Seven, eight ayes, one abstained, motion carried.
Okay, so Mary, do you want to make the motion to approve this ordinance?
So, yes, I'd like to move that we approve ordinance number, I lost my spot.
It's okay, 032020.
032020.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I second.
Lori Chestnut seconded it. So we had a motion by Fair, second by Chestnut, that we approve ordinance number 032020. Any discussion? Sandy will call her own.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric, Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
No.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Derek Olson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one no, motion carried.
Okay, so this ordinance will take place, actually, if you look under the mayor's rights, I have five business days to-
To veto.
To veto this, so this would actually not take place until next Wednesday. Okay? All right, under new business, we have memorandum of understanding between the city of Wapaka, the towns of Farmington, Dayton, regarding room tax money distribution. And Kathy, that's yours?
Yes.
It's not right now, but-
My item's on page 72 of the packet, and this is just the start of the discussion with the towns. I'm just bringing it to council for information. Last year, the state passed a law that the online Airbnb, Expedia, had to collect room tax on any of their properties that they rent. So what has happened is that we're getting money for online reservations, however, most of these properties are not, when we look at the website, in the city of Wapaka. These are properties around the lake area, in Farmington and Dayton. And to be a little bit more transparent, we want to work with the towns to see about getting them to pass a room tax, the same rate as ours, and then work with distributing those monies that we collect from the online reservation services. Right now, they do not provide us any addresses, amounts, or anything. They just tell us this, how much they sold online, and this is how much taxes. And they're going off on the fact that the mailing address is Wapaka, Wisconsin, and we have a room tax. So their assumption is that there is a room tax out there for any of those properties with that mailing address. We're working with Von Bresen in drafting a memorandum of understanding. Attorney Sorensen did not have a memorandum done because of the holiday to get something to you. We also are going to wait to see this month, both the town of Dayton and the town of Farmington are looking to pass an 8% room tax also. So I'm just bringing it for informational purposes only to the council, to inform everybody that we're looking at a memorandum of understanding to help in distributing taxes that are collected that aren't really the cities, and should be the towns. And we're working with attorneys, both the town's attorney and our attorney, to draft a memorandum of understanding. There is an assembly bill that was passed last month to require the Airbnb online services to provide- to require the Airbnb online services to provide more information because we're not the only ones that this is happening to. Um, but it's in the senate yet and it hasn't passed into law. So, maybe, uh, we'll have, um, some more information if, um, the, uh, room tax law gets changed to provide more information. But right now, we're looking at, um, the possibility of having a memorandum of understanding, uh, to distribute room taxes to the town. Um, only like, I said, I don't believe that they should be saved with the city.
Uh, any questions? So, um, I've had some discussion with you, Kathy, but it, it's brought up more discussion, actually, that I want to know. Um, I'm not sure that I got the answer. So, where does the room tax dollars go that is, that's going to be collected for the ma- town of Farmington, Dayton, uh, or any townships that, uh, you know, I mean, it could be?
Right now, we're collecting it. The Airbnb, uh, Home and Away and, uh, Expedia are sending the dollars to us, um, based on our, our tax, uh, rate that we have. So, we're sitting on it separately.
So, the, if the town of Farmington and the town of Dayton both pass their room tax laws into place where they can charge 8% for rentals, um, then they would be responsible for, for, they would receive the payments or would they still come to the city?
Well, right now, we can't, um, we can't determine that they're actually the town of Farmington, other than going on to the webs, the Airbnb website and, and searching to see what properties are in the city of Wapaka based on, um, addresses that are available, uh, online. I believe the, um, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Terry and Mitch have, have looked into where most of these dollars, rentals units are. Um, they're not in the city of Wapaka. If there are, there's just a few of them, um.
So, if, I go back to my question here now. If the town of Farmington passes a, uh, whatever they call it out there, a regulation that they have, that people that rent by the week or by the day have to charge 8% room tax dollars, where is that money going to go?
If, if they do, they could have it so that they get that money directly. But right now, it's the, because of the way the law is set up, the Airbnb, the online services don't distribute it that way.
Right, so until, even if they pa- let's say they passed it tomorrow, where they got the 8%, it would still come to us because the, like, the Airbnbs, VRBOs of the world don't have the details set up. It would, it would still come to the city of Wapaka. This would just allow them then to collect it as a part of an agreement.
So, only the Airbnbs will come to us? If they, if somebody rents directly to an individual and collects the room tax dollars on it?
They should be submitting those to Farmington or Dayton.
So, we're only going to get the Airbnb monies for the time being until they figure it out?
Right.
Okay. So, this memorandum of understanding is only until they can figure out how to get the money to the right places?
Right, they just have to fix the state law.
All right, and how much effort do you put into this?
Um, right now, I'm putting a lot of effort trying to get this memorandum of understanding, but as far as collecting on a monthly basis, it's minimal. Um, what it does do is it has, um, helped the, it'll help this, uh, Convention and Visitors Bureau, uh, with only one report, uh, to, um, provide, uh, the detail that, uh, that we need for the annual report to the state for the room tax.
Good. Anybody else have any questions? So, this is being tabled tonight until we can actually see a memorandum of understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Any, that's it? Anybody? Thank you. All right, uh, going on, uh, we have an agreement with the Wapaka Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is, uh, acronym is WACVB, Room Tax. And Erin, you're leading the charge here.
Yes. All right, thank you, Mayor Smith. Uh, so this is on page 73 of the packet. Uh, a little background, um, as you guys have probably heard before, in 19, or in 2015, the state of Wisconsin passed Act 55, which required municipalities to forward at least 70% of the room tax dollars collected to a local, uh, bureau that promotes tourism and, uh, I guess with the room tax dollars. For us, that's the Wapaka Area Convention or Convention and Visitors Bureau. We've had two contracts with them, uh, the last one being from 2017 to 2019. And when I say contracts, I should say agreements. That agreement, uh, did expire on January 1st of this year, so we're looking to bring something forward to get us covered from 2020 to 2022. The agreement that you see attached is not very different from the one that was done in 2017 to 2019. Uh, the only thing I do want to mention is that I have had conversations with Terry, who's on tonight, and we have talked about providing, uh, just kind of in the spirit of transparency, providing some additional details on expenditures, um, basically line item expenditures that would be attached to their quarterly reports. Um, I was able to talk to Kathy and Mary, who are both on our CVB. They're our representatives for the city, um, as a part of that contract. And I think we're comfortable bringing forward the new contract from 2020 to 2022 with that in mind, um, and that would be my recommendation to approve that agreement.
Okay, any discussion?
Erin, it's, it's a two-year agreement?
Um, it's a three-year agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any discussion?
Yep. I'd like to make a, a comment.
Sure, go on, Dimitri.
Thank you. Looking at the, uh, budget from a prior period, the chamber had budgeted $40,000, uh, underlying item called rent. And, um, when I asked for more details about that, I was told that that includes, uh, office and visitor reception area space, storage for brochures, utility costs, office supplies, printing costs and postage. So, I'm just wondering, when, uh, the chamber says that they'll provide more detail, will they actually itemize it out like that instead of wrapping it all together? And the reason why that concerns me is I just want to make sure that there is no potential for commingling the funds of public tax dollars for room tax going to fund the operations of a members-only, uh, organization. And so, having greater detail, uh, broken out, uh, would definitely be helpful.
Terry, do you, Terry Schultz is, is also, um, on via, um, the teams. Terry, do you want to answer that?
Uh, yeah, we can break that down into more detail. That won't be a problem.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mayor, can I point out just for clarity, this agreement isn't between the chamber and the city, it's between the Wapaka Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Thank you. Did I, did I say that?
No, I, I just, that, that the conversation was about transparency between the chamber. I just wanted to, for clarity, we're not talking about a contract with the.
Yeah, thank you, Tom, I appreciate that. You're right.
That's correct. It's, um, between the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the city. And that is a separate entity from the chamber. We're two separate organizations. We're both 501(c)(6) organizations, but everything is kept separately.
So, um, thank you, Terry. Dimitri, thank you. Kathy, this is a, more of a question for you, cause just my information, I think the rest of the council might want to hear this too, but, so the, the city is actually responsible for the annual reporting to the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, as you read, I think in the second to the last paragraph there, or last, whichever way you look at it. Have we had that, have we been required to report? Is there a report out there, a form?
Yes, there, there is a report on the Department of Revenue website, um, that provides, uh, detailed list of all the expense, uh, checks over $1,000 that the CVB writes, plus, um, uh, the amount of taxes that we collected and, uh, what was, you know, how much was spent.
Okay, and, uh, so we've reported that, now obviously, we, I don't think that's been audited yet, uh, by the state. But you have not had any correspondence with the state that, that they've questioned any of the, uh, any part of the report or anything that you've sent in?
No, under the statutes that that report was created under, um, there is no audit. It's just for transparency purposes. So, it's just to provide, um, people, uh, the information as to what the room tax dollars are being used for. In fact, the Department of Revenue said that they aren't going to, you know, this isn't tied to any, um, distribution or, uh, program. It's just out there for transparency purposes for the public.
Good. Thank you. Um, okay, any other questions? Anybody would like to make a motion to approve this agreement?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, uh, second by Pachatsky, that, uh, we enter into an agreement with the Wapaka Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is the WACVB, uh, for, uh, from January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, uh, 2022. Any further discussion? Sandy will call her own.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Terry. Thanks for attending.
Thanks for allowing us to attend.
Yeah, and Mitch was on too. I, hey, Mitch, thanks for all the comments that you gave us.
Just here to smile.
Uh, next up, we have, uh, Phase 3 of the city's opening plan, and, uh, I'll turn that over to Erin also.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor Smith. So, this is on, and the page we're looking at is going to be page 81. So, we've added some details into the document that you guys have seen three times now, um, each time we bring it forward with a few changes. So, this, we're looking at Phase 3 being effective July 8th through August 4th. So, this one's usually at span one council meeting. This one, we're looking to span the next month in Phase 3. Um, there has been quite a bit of detail added, and most of it, again, is with the library and with the Parks and Rec Department. This is something we've talked about in our department head meetings over the last two weeks, probably three, actually, because we've had one of those weird scenarios where we've had two weeks in between, uh, council meetings. But I'm going to turn it over, um, to Peg. Peg is going to talk about the library first and what that'll look like in Phase 3, and then we'll turn it over to Andrew, uh, to talk about the Park and Rec Department, and, um, open it up for any questions if you guys have any.
Thank you. So, the library board at our last meeting, uh, actually put an addendum on our code of conduct, which requires them to, um, social distance, to wear a mask if they're over the age of two or they have a medical condition that, um, doesn't allow them to wear a mask, we'll figure out another way to service them. Since we've moved back into the building, we've really tried to create a situation where our staff and anyone who enters our building feels safe. And, um, we've continued that in Phase 3. So, Phase 3 actually started for us yesterday, and we opened for browsing. So, that means that somebody can come into our building, they can choose things from the shelf and check them out with staff or with the self-check. In addition to that, we've also allowed use of our study rooms. And it is a single use for an hour for a single person. Um, what we, what that allows then is that that room can be sanitized and it can be left overnight to make sure there's nothing lingering for that next person to use the room. We've also allowed our conference room to be used by up to three people for an hour. So, we're trying to look at the services that we can safely offer, and we're putting those into place. Computers can be used by any person who has, um, the ability to use a computer. So, if they're a juvenile, but their parent has allowed them to use a computer, they are welcome to come in and use a computer. Prior to this, it was only somebody who's 16 years of age or older. So, we do have some new services that were offered. All pieces of our building are open, some of those areas are restricted. So, the teen room, because of the size, is only allowed three patrons and one staff person at a time. We worked through the guidelines, the Public Library's reopening guide that was pub- published by the Department of Public Instruction, to really figure out what we can do in a way that's safe for our staff and for everyone who enters our building. Um, and we do require that everyone who enters our building for use of computers, even using the copy machine, signs a waiver that allows us to do, um, contact tracing if it becomes necessary. So, it does take a little bit of time when you walk into the building. We'll tell you what the rules are, we'll help you sign that waiver, and then you can go and do the things that you want to do in the library. We have removed some of the things that might be browsing. Um, the newspapers are behind the desk, but you can ask for one and you can take it home with you and then return it in the book drop. Our, um, quarantine requirements are 72 hours, which means that everything that's returned to us has to sit for three days before we can actually check it in. So, at this time, we're not, we're not charging any overdue fees because things are sitting for three days before they get checked in. Um, and we're just trying to get everybody back into the library as safely as we can. Using the guidelines from the DPI, we determined that about 30 people can use our, our library safely and maintain social distancing. So, we actually have a basket system that allows us to count the number of people who are in the building at a time, so that we're not going over that number. Um, and we are asking that people with their children have a one-to-one ratio. So, an adult with a child, one-to-one, so that we can make sure that that child, who may not understand the social distancing requirements, will be inside of the patron, of the parent at all times. And, uh, we're really excited to be able to offer these services safely. Um, if a person enters and does not have a mask, we provide a mask for them. Any other questions? Thrilled to be able to serve the public again. Although I have to say, we've been serving them all along with curbside, and it's a lot of work. So, we've been working hard all along. Thanks.
Thank you, Peg.
Thanks, Peg.
Andrew, you want to talk about the Parks and Recreation Department?
All right, so, um, if you remember in the past, uh, Phase 3 for us was supposed to be kind of a, more of a grand opening and, and back to normal as we would be. Um, based on some of the things that are happening in the area and in the state, um, you know, we decided to move forward in a more cautious, um, way for Phase 3. And so, Phase 3, if you notice, if you read through them, is very, very similar to Phase 2. Everything from Phase 2 is still in place, um, and I'll go over just some of the changes and, um, skip over the stuff that will remain the same for us. So, at the Record, uh, Recreation Center, uh, in the upstairs, uh, we will strongly be recommending that, uh, patrons wear a mask when they come into the rec center, as long as they're not engaging in physical activity. Obviously, if you're playing basketball and running around, we don't want you to be wearing a mask and, and try to deal with that. Um, but we do ask that they follow all other CDC hygiene guidelines. There's still, uh, numbers, limited numbers in the gyms, uh, lobby and concession area. Exercise room will be close to the public, except for senior center classes, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Locker rooms remain closed. People will still be required to bring their own equipment. Um, park shelter rentals are still, uh, available at this time. Starting July 1, we started those. And we are going to try to move forward in a few programs in Phase 3. Um, things like disc golf, uh, running program, art projects. Um, and we're going to be following that UW Health, uh, and Children Hospitals, uh, Wisconsin Guidelines for Youth Sports, which we talked about, uh, quite a while ago. So, we'll be following those guidelines as we try to run those programs. So we'll be following those guidelines as we try to run those programs. The senior center, we did make some more changes to try to protect that vulnerable, vulnerable population. Masks will be required in the senior center moving forward with this Phase 3. They can be removed once they get to their spot in the exercise room. And Sarah, our senior center coordinator, has done a good job of marking the floor so everyone has their own spot that will keep people social distance and ready to go. Participants now must pre-register for the class. We had some concerns that, you know, we may have, let's just say, 10 spots in the exercise room that are available for people to exercise. And because we've been gone for so long, what if 25 people show up? And then they're all mingling and standing in the hallway, and how do you decide who was here first and who wasn't? So we decided to move that towards registering for those classes so we're sure that we have the room for them and that we can keep people protected. Computer lab will still be by appointment, toenail clinic by appointment with protections in place. The pool tables and the cards are still not available at this time, and we're not necessarily open for people just to hang out and linger at this time. The beach is now open and fully staffed with the same guidelines that we had for our staff in the past. And then we did discuss as far as upcoming events or facility rentals, that if it's something to expect, expected to attract more than 350 people, we will not allow that. And that's not our normal rentals at our parks. That would be like tournaments out at Swan Park, things like that. You know, some of the, a lot of the stuff that's been canceled already, Foundry Picnic, things like that as we move forward. So those are the changes and recommendations we have for Phase 3.
Thanks, Andrew.
So, yeah, thank you very much. If anyone has any questions for Andrew, that would be great, too. If not, I just want to mention a couple of things. Number one, Peg mentioned it, and this process has been more work for staff, and I give them a ton of credit, especially with the type of services that those two departments offer. When you're talking about browsing for books and when you're talking about doing recreation type things, they want to provide for our community as much as anybody. And the amount of thought that has gone into doing that safely, I truly commend them for. So I think that's awesome, and I think our staff has done an awesome job with that. The other thing I want to give them credit for is the, you know, we talk about this paragraph, impacts that can alter details of the phases. When we first rolled this out, we truly wanted to get back to normal in Phase 3. And this isn't exactly normal, but it's kind of where we need to be at right now. And I think everyone feels that way. So I guess those are the only comments I wanted to add. I also, Mayor Smith has been involved in these conversations as well, and want to thank him for, for being involved in those. And with that, I guess if there's no other questions, I would just recommend getting us or taking action to get us into Phase 3.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments about the outline for the Phase 3? We don't have a Phase 4 here yet. So we're kind of at a dead end here, and I suppose that will be something in, in the future, whenever that may be. But we were hoping Phase 3 would be the end, but it's, it's obviously not. If you're comfortable with the recommendations of the staff and the mayor's office on the Phase 3, then I would ask that you approve this by making a motion to approve it. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Chestnut, that we approve of the Phase 3 city's opening plan as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. Okay. On page 41, I think it is, right? 41 is the license report. Or is that wrong?
I think it's 85.
Then you start putting page numbers, and they're not even right. Okay. On 80, on page 85, we have license report 1505. Again, these are bartenders' license, so we would need a motion to approve.
All to approve.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hagan. How am I doing there? Yep. That we approve license report 1505. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Got one name on the license report 1506. This is the background check of, of the, of the taxi service, so we'd need a motion to approve.
Move to approve. License number 1506.
Thank you. Motion by Fair, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve license report 1506. This is a taxi driver's license renewal pending payment of any monies owed to the city and background check. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Discussion, please.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Go for it.
I have, I have noticed the Wapaka taxis parking in handicapped areas without the proper tagging, and I'm concerned about that.
That is well noted, Alan. I will make a call and check into that.
Thank you, Alan. Anybody else? All right. Yeah, go ahead.
I have noticed the same thing, too.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Paul said he, he's noticed the same thing if you didn't hear him. I can't hear anything. I don't know why I'm saying it to you guys, but, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Paul. Anybody else? All right, ready to vote? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. No issues or projects for tonight. Communications recommendations of the mayor. We did have some public input tonight, and I just wanted to touch on that. Anytime we have public input in, although we didn't make any comments after the public input, don't think that the mayor's office or city staff is not taking public input seriously, and we'll certainly have a discussion on that in the future. And if you have any comments on that also, because you didn't get the opportunity to make comments tonight either, either call Aaron or myself or email us, and we can discuss those items, too. Okay? That's all I have. Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting tonight? All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I heard, I heard Hagan, second by Keeland. To adjourn till our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, July 21st, 2020, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We're adjourned at 7:19 PM.